Meeting to order at 6:02 PM. This is a joint meeting with the Planning Commission on Tuesday, October 11, 2022. Madam Clerk, will you call the board?
I will. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for your patience while I do a couple of different hats over here.
Sure, no problem.
Tim Hale?
Here.
I am expecting Stephanie Nowers, Dee McKee. She's supposed to be calling in, Madam Mayor. Robert Yunt?
He's online, I believe.
Tooter?
Moki Two?
Here.
Jesse Sumner?
Here.
Ron Bernier?
Here.
And you have a quorum of that body. We're going on to the Planning Commission now. Doug Glenn? Richard Allen? Patricia Chesbrough?
Here.
Michael Rubio?
Here.
Chris Elder?
Commissioner Alder was replaced with Commissioner Kenda.
Thank you for clarifying that. I will get the agenda updated, I apologize, Bill. Stafford Glashen?
Present.
And I am not expecting Kurt Scoggan. Madam Mayor, you have a quorum of both bodies.
All right, great, thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda? Okay, let the record show this. Stephanie Nowers has arrived at 6:04. Hearing none, and the agenda is approved as presented. If you all rise, please, and Mr. Chairman, if you will lead us in the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, our nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The next item on our agenda is audience participation. Anyone is welcome to address the Assembly and the Planning Commission on any subject. We do have a sign-up sheet. I will call those names first, and then I will see if there's others. And even if you didn't sign up, you're still welcome to address the body. So the first person that has signed up is David Post. And you'll need to turn the mic on there, sir. It'll turn green.
Push the button.
There you go.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Hi, I'm the Planning Manager with Department of Transportation, representing Central Region, which of course includes the Matzoo Borough. Also used to be a planner with the Matzoo Borough way back in the days of Duffy. So you could go ahead and say it's my fault. But I did want to go ahead and call your attention to a couple of things that I've been working with your staff on. We have another opportunity to go ahead and select projects that are solicited by local governments for the State Transportation Improvement Program. Not asking for you guys to do anything. We're already working with staff on this. But I did want to go ahead and make you aware of this. You guys had been very successful the last go-around. Some of the projects we funded through this type of a process were South Trunk Road, Hemmer Road, Herman Road, the Selden Road Extension. Ones from further back that were funded through the same process were Seward Meridian Road, the Trunk Road project that extends all the way from the Parks Highway now at the Palmer-Fishick Road. So we feel like it's an important opportunity. Just wanted to make sure that you guys were all aware of it. It's, we're limiting projects this go-around to about $15 million, unfortunately. So it's not the same magnitude as the Trunk Road project or the Seward Meridian project. But still, we wanted to make sure you're aware of the opportunity. One of the, one of the first steps, of course, is the notice of intent to apply that its sun sets here very shortly, on October 31st. Again, your staff is aware of this. It's, projects are limited to those projects that are not on the National Highway System or the Alaska Highway System, just to be clear. So the National Highway System, for example, includes the Parks, the Glen, actually includes the Palmer-Wassilla Highway and Kinnick-Goose Bay Road out as far as Vine Road. And there's a few more that are on the Alaska Highway System as well. One of the ways that you guys were able to do so well in this most recent CTP is because you were able to go ahead and bring a significant amount of matching funds, which is one of the things that we score heavily when we're evaluating projects for the CTP. And so we look forward to going ahead and working with you guys, working with your staff as we go ahead and draft projects for our headquarters staff to go ahead and consider. I do want to emphasize, too, that one of the things that really greatly enables you guys to go ahead and be successful with this is some of your long-range transportation planning. You guys actually have quite a bit more power in terms of long-range planning than the department does. Once we get a project, we could go ahead and move forward with that project, but our hands are kind of tied with the circumstances. Is my timer up?
Go ahead.
Okay, with the circumstances that we're presented with. So one of the things that's coming forward with you, to you shortly, is this official streets and highways plan. And I really feel like that is something that is of great benefit to you guys. Refining it, making it as pertinent and applicable to the conditions within the Matzoo Borough are very critical. I've looked at it. I wholeheartedly support it. Thank you.
And sir, I said your name for the record, but if you will state your name for the record, please.
David Post.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Amber McDougall?
It's McDonough. Thank you. Greetings, Borough leadership.
You can pull it down if you need to.
Thank you.
There you go.
Greetings, Borough leadership. My name is Amber McDonough, M-C-D-O-N-O-U-G-H. My husband and I have owned property in the Fishick area for over 20 years and support responsible development that preserves our community's character. We support the Planning Commission's Resolution 2230 that fails to repeal of Matzoo Borough Code 1705 for essential service utilities. Without 1705, there is no form for Matzoo residents to voice concerns about impacts to infrastructure projects or to compel utilities to adopt mitigation measures. Instead of a repeal, we hope the Assembly adopts the Commission's recommendations to amend 1705 to better protect public and private lands. 1705 was tested during the Planning Commission's recent review of the Matnuska Electric Association's Fishick to Pittman Power Project. The northern route transmission line includes 10 remote miles of 100-foot wide clearing across floodplains, wetlands, farmlands, as well as both a north and southbound crossing of the Little Sioux River. Hundreds of Matzoo residents participated in the code's mandated public participation from MEA's open house in May 2021 through the utility's appeal hearing this past April. Despite overwhelming public concerns about the northern route, 1705 did not protect landowners. The Planning Department Director can only confirm that MEA completed the required public participation. He cannot ensure the utility's decisional document incorporated all feasible measures to enhance the welfare and of borough residents and properties while minimizing negative effects. Last month, I submitted a letter to use summarizing the key flaws of 1705 based on this experience. Amendments to this code should clarify the borough's criteria and procedures for approving a utility's decisional document. Changes such as, number one, to define community assets for protection, view sheds, public waters, health, safety, and welfare; two, to prevent new community hazards such as wildfires, spills, and flood damage; three, to refer to borough-approved community plans for project alignment with local goals; four, to ensure public standards of good practice for fairness and transparency in public engagements; five, shift the public hearing responsibly to the commission instead of the utility having run the appeals process; six, empower the borough to close the loop and mandate utilities respond to public concerns with all feasible mitigation measures. Only the borough can defend residents from the long-term land use impacts of utility projects. No other regulatory agency in Alaska does this. Amending 1705 is the only way to ensure utility projects align with the best interests of the borough by incorporating new standards of approval and a process to better address public concerns. Thank you.
Clint Alder?
Yes, my name is Clint Adler.
Adler, excuse me, sir.
Yes. First off, I have to apologize. I thought I was being asked to give a presentation on the department's projects, so it'll take much more than three minutes.
Okay. We have a designated place for you on the agenda. How about that? Okay. Is there anyone else in the audience that would like to address the Assembly and the Planning Commission on any subject? We have two people online, all right. I don't see anybody moving here, so who's ever online, go ahead.
Hello?
Hello. Please state your name and then give your testimony.
My name is Patricia Fisher. I have been a resident of Meadow Lakes for 23 years. I strongly support Planning Commission Resolution 22-30, which fails the repeal of MSB Code 17.07, requiring public outreach for essential service utilities. It is important to emphasize with regard to 17.05. The Planning Commission unanimously failed the motion made by the Assembly to repeal 17.05. The Commission obviously recognized the importance of the ordinance. This ordinance, too, this ordinance protects the residents of the borough. I was told by an Assembly person, well, the State Regulatory Commission oversees utility projects. The RCA is concerned with rates and service, not land issues, and 17.05 requires outreach as to the location of a utility project. And location is a land issue. Where a pipeline or transmission line is located is a land issue. The Assembly represents the residents of the borough, and it is your job to protect us so far as land issues are concerned. The northern route of MEA's transmission line includes 10 remote lines of 100-foot wide right-of-way clearing across floodplains, wetlands, and farmlands, as well as a north and southbound crossing of the Little Sioux River. We just recently spent almost a year on discussion of MEA's new transmission line. I participated and commented through several organizations in which I'm active. The proposed line will pass right along Meadow Lake seniors' facility and will actually take land that was designated for a portion of a new senior unit. MEA did a good job of outreach. Where they failed was in response. They promised to listen to residents and to get back to residents with questions. That did not usually happen. 17.05 should be amended to clarify the borough's criteria and review procedures for approving a utility's proposal. I support the recommendation, recommended changes that Mrs. McDonough has proposed, such as defining the community assets that need to be protected, preventing new community hazards from risk of wildfire spills and flood damage, referring to a borough-approved, referring to borough-approved community plans, such as the one that Meadow Lakes has, for project alignment with, for project alignment with local goals, and ensure public standards of good practice for fairness and transparency. I urge you to amend and improve 17.05 rather than appealing it. Thank you.
Thank you. The next person that's online, please state your name and give us your testimony.
Hello. I guess I'm the next person. My name is Pam Young, and I'm calling on behalf of the Takitna Community Council. We submitted a letter last August supporting the decision to, to reporting, supporting Resolution 22-25. And today, today we also want to support the recommendation to, to establish standards for approval. And as the other speakers have mentioned, these standards for approval should, should address the need for a public forum that encourages the input of the borough residents and that a decisional document's approval should follow a critical analysis of negative impacts and clear determination of whether such impacts were avoided or adequately mitigated to safeguard the welfare of borough residents as well as the quality of our environment. And this will hopefully follow in the coming months where we can track and learn more about what the approval process will be. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Caleb, do we have anybody else online to testify? No, okay. One last time for anyone present that would like to give testimony to the Assembly and the Planning Commission. Okay, seeing no one, then I will close audience participation. And the joint items, do you read those, Madam Clerk?
It says the title. You can read the title if you'd like, Madam Mayor.
Okay. So the first item, the first item is Alaska State Department of Transportation and Public Facilities Transportation Project Updates. And it's been requested by the administration. And Mr. Brown, do you have a staff report?
Yes, Madam Mayor, this is a spot for Clint Adler. He's a district office chief out here in the valley. And he does have a presentation for you to give you an update on all things DOT and the Matzoo.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay.
Mike Brown?
If we could, can I interrupt you just a minute, sir, please? For those that are online, be, please be sure that your phone is muted. Thank you. All right. Go ahead, sir, finally.
Members of the Assembly, Commissioners, thanks for having me here. Before I get started, I would like to acknowledge, I've already met Mr. David Post, but I'd also like to acknowledge my bosses here, Mr. Luke Boland. He's the regional, Central Region Preconstruction Engineer in charge of all things preconstruction for the whole region of the department, so.
Okay.
I'll get started here. First slide here, I just wanted to mention and reiterate that we are here in the valley now with a district office. Brand-new, just started the spring, early this spring. I'm kind of the chief contact there for all things that you might want to talk about. And yeah, we're really happy to be here. So as, as you can see, we've got, we, we're not a, we're not completely fully staffed yet, but we do have three design folks there, some, three right-of-way folks, myself, and construction people are on the second floor moving in and out. So it's, it's a great facility. It's got room for a good 40, 40 folks, and over the time, we expect to grow the office. Next slide.
It's right there in front of you.
Oh.
Where are those presenters?
Very good.
You just pointed at me.
Pointed at you. Gotcha. I just wanted to give you a quick overview of all the things that were happening in construction out here in 2022. The dark green ones are the ongoing projects that have been going on for at least a year or two. And the new ones are the lighter green ones. So you can see, we've got a good couple, you know, 10, 15 projects there. Parks Highway, ship, I'll go over some of these as we, as we go through the presentation and explain. But the bottom in red is the website where you can find all this information. I'm going to go through these fairly quickly because there's a number of slides here. We're awfully busy, so. Whoops. All right. A lot of the projects list that you saw there were projects that, and as you've been driving around, you've probably seen us out there working on various spot repairs of the road, repairing damage that was done in the, in the 2018, well, November 2018 earthquake. We do have a website there where you can actually look and see the status of all the projects that are ongoing. Most of them are wrapped up, but there's a few of them that we're still, still working on in the design phase, a couple of them at least. We are getting up to speed with our GIS capabilities. We've got two new, relatively new GIS professionals in the preconstruction group in the region, and they're working on maps to make it easy for you to find information. And keep an eye on that website for updates on the GIS-type stuff that we're putting out. But that's a snapshot of all the things going on in the valley. The blue things are in construction. The red ones are in design. And the green ones, you'll see the Parks Highway Alternative Corridor Study, and I'll mention that later. That's in a planning phase. Big, big, big projects that we're really proud of, Kinnick-Goose Bay Road. As you know, that's, that's been on the books for some time, and we're breaking ground this fall with utility locates right now. We're utility relocating utilities, so you can see some, some clearing work down out there right now. The project's going to be done in two phases. The first phase is from Centaur, or basically the, the beginning of the, the road up near the railroad tracks all the way to Fairview Loop. And we're going to start that this year. It'll probably take a couple of years. And then the second phase will go from Fairview Loop to Setlers Bay, commencing in about 2025 and going through '26. It's a pretty spendy project, about $150 million for the whole thing. The other big one here is Seward Meridian Parkway, the Phase 2, the, the northern part, which is going to connect the Palmer-Wassilla Highway with Selden, East Selden Road. Very much anticipated project, lots of angst over this one to get it done soon. And we have been working on it hard. We had anticipated getting it out to construction this year, but unfortunately, we still have some right-of-way things to wrap up. So with, with any luck at all, we'll should be able to start next, next spring. But again, with all things right-of-way, there's always uncertainty with those things because we need to wrap those, wrap those up. And in this case, there's condonations involved. Rough cost of that, that's a community transportation program project, a CTP project, heavily leveraged, about $67 million. Wassilla Main Street Rehabilitation. This is going to be at the beginning of Kinnick-Goose Bay Road. We're going to turn Main Street into a couplet so that it processes traffic much, much more easily through there. It'll go through, I think, Talkeetna Street and up through Yenlow before it hooks up with, with Bogart. Anyway, the website there is WassillaMainStreetProject.com for anything you'd have questions on. We hope to begin construction with that in the spring of 2024. Again, right-of-way is, is what's keeping us going on that one. I mentioned the planning study, the big one, the Parks Highway Alternative Corridor Study. This is what we call a planning and environmental linkage study. Planning, or P E L, is kind of a process that the Federal Highway Administration has pioneered some years ago to try to incorporate a lot of the environmental studies and the planning studies ahead of time before you actually start the project. In this case, we're trying to study the area, take advantage of studies that have already been done, and to come up with a list of alternatives that can then go forward into the next stages of project development. Here's a timeline of the, of the study. I gave you a, a website there. And on that website, you can see the timeline where, where things are at right now. Here in the fall of 2022, the study team has identified alternatives, and they've developed screening criteria, and they're going to put that out for, for public review. The next open house will be on December 8th at the Wassilla Public Library, where they'll discuss the alternatives that are being recommended and the screening criteria. Parks Highway, Mile 44 to 52, you've seen this being constructed this summer, all the way from Pittman Road out to Big Lake Road. Almost done with it. It's a great, great capacity improvement program, a project on the Parks Highway there. It costs us about $40 million for construction. We also have an effort to fix a bunch of drainage issues and culverts on the Parks Highway from Mile 99 all the way to 163, which is kind of the northern end of the, of the borough's border up there by Cantwell. And it's doing mostly rehabilitation work on drainage. And then we've got another project on the books here to do some capacity improvements and some payment rehabilitation from the Big Lake Road all the way up to Willow. That project's going to be phased out to take care of the northern part most likely first because it's got the highest amount of pavement distress. And we'll switch attention to the southern part and take a look at capacity improvements. And then I've mentioned the Parks Highway Bridge Replacements. That's, those are under construction this summer, replacing Sheep Creek Bridge, Goose Creek Bridge, and Montana Creek Bridge. We should have those bridges replaced and the project wrapped up by about 2023. And then on the Glen Highway, shifting focus here to the National Highway System, Airport Heights to Park Highway Rehabilitation Project. Really looking at extending the life of the, of the pavement, fixing drainage, a lot of covert work that needs to be done, and then incorporating some of the studies that we've done in terms of making the, the corridor more resilient in terms of incident management. And to that respect, we'll be looking at upgrading a lot of the entrance ramps so that you can have traffic going up and down the entrance ramps during incidents to kind of increase the, increase the flow and reduce bottlenecks. It's going to be a spendy project, probably around $110 million just for construction. And again, we're very preliminarily into the design right now, so that's a very rough estimate. But we hope to get, get to construction on that sometime, probably around '25 or so. By the way, if anybody has any questions, jump in as I'm, as I'm going through these. I'll be happy to answer them real quick or at the end. Glen Highway, 34 to 42, you've already seen Phase 1 completed. Springer Lake, or Springer Loop into Palmer. Phase 2 is going to re, basically foreland the road from the interchange all the way up to inner Springer Loop Road. And then we'll also build, as part of that project, a pathway along, along the northern part of that, which is fronting the lakes recreational area, the Matnuska Lake recreational area, and include a frontage road as well. So let's just follow on projects to, to what we've already done. Looks like construction will be here, I believe, next, next year. We'll start construction on Phase 2 there.
Can I ask a question about?
Yes.
Yeah, that, that is badly needed, and I know it's been in the works for a long time. So did right-of-way acquisition occur this year? And is there more right-of-way acquisition that has to happen before construction?
I'm not sure about this year. I do know that things are pretty much wrapped up and, and are about ready to go to construction, so they would be done.
Do you know if the utilities still need to be moved? I thought that was supposed to happen this year, but may not have.
I don't believe they started on that yet, but it's, 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 that was in the works. I believe it's going to start next, next spring.
Okay, thank you for that. I, that stretch between Echo and Bradley Lakes has some really bad ruts, and that's going to be a really dangerous zone this winter. And I realize that the department doesn't want to fix it when you're going to tear the whole thing up next year. But I just wanted to highlight that. Several people have mentioned it. And if we can get extra attention to that maintenance-wise this year, and then I hope that the 2023 is, is when we actually are able to do that. this year, and then I hope that the 2023 is, is when we actually are able to do that. So I just wanted to, to confirm that 2023 was the, the date to do it.
That's when we're, we're gonna go to construction, yes.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. Yeah, I've experienced those ruts myself driving that section, so I know exactly what you're talking about, and we'll pass that on. I'm sure we're well aware of that.
Yeah, there's been some horrible accidents there, so I just wanna head that off. Thank you.
Yep. Glen Highway, this is up towards, between here and Sutton, Moose Creek Canyon. Right now, we are looking at essentially restarting this effort. We have, the Federal Highway Administration has asked us to come back and restart this project because of some environmental concerns and a change in the direction that we were going. So that's, hope to get back on the design here. We have a concept design that'll largely improve the, the highway and replace the bridge, mostly on the existing alignment, but there will be some minor realignment there to, to min, to mitigate the, the ravelling gravel onto the road along that hillside. Hope to get that project into construction probably by twenty-five or twenty-six, but it will involve some right-of-way.
Assemblyperson Hale has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, through the mayor. I, I know you caught a lot of flack at the Sutton Community Council about this, but anything is better than nothing out there, so thank you.
Yes, thanks. All right. Kings River Bridge, just some good news. That project will go to construction next, next spring, so we'll replace the Kings River Bridge there, which is in the same condition that the other bridges are on the system, the older bridges that were built back in the forties, I believe. They definitely need attention. The section eighty, about eighty-four to ninety-two, the Long Lake section, working on, we're working with Federal Highway's Western Federal Lands Division to design that, and right now, we're continuing work on the environmental and preliminary design work. And there, there will be some right-of-way acquisitions associated with that as well. Optimistically, we're looking at around twenty-six or later to, to get that to construction. That is a large project, a lot, a lot of virgin disturbance of the ground, so as you can imagine, there's a lot of environmental effort there to, to make that documentation I'm gonna jump into the safety-related projects. Safety's a big, big emphasis of the department, and we have a, what we call a Highway Safety Improvement Program, H S I P for short. A lot of the projects that go, that are funded by that program are identified through data, traffic crash data, fatality data, accidents, that identify which areas of the roads across the whole state are most in need of safety improvements. So these are the kind of projects that, that we fund with that. And you can see that over time, the graph shows basically from nineteen eighty-five up until present, the different fatality rates in Alaska, the United States. What's really worth noting here is that although the, in Alaska, the vehicle, the vehicle miles traveled has increased dramatically, the fatality rate has gone down, which shows the success of the program. Key takeaways, you know, these are just some of the statistics of the, of the Highway Safety Improvement Program. And out of all of the fatalities and serious injuries between twenty sixteen, over a four-year period, you're seeing these kinds of reductions and, and benefits to the, to the projects. So these are the active H S I P projects that we have in the valley, that we're working on design right now. Pittman Road, we're gonna widen the shoulders and do some slope flattening to kind of modernize that road. Wassilla Fishhook and Spruce Avenue, we'll put a roundabout in there. Palmer Fishhook and Trunk Road, another roundabout. We also are doing an inventory of all of the guardrail. You've seen a lot, there seems to be a war on against guardrail for some reason. Anyway, we're doing inventories of all the guardrail and, and looking at places where that needs to be upgraded. And then at Church Road and Spruce Avenue intersection, we're gonna put a flashing beacon in there to reduce conflicts with pedestrians. And then, of course, you're familiar with the Glen Highway Medium Barrier that we just constructed already. I've seen that hit at least three times, indicating that at some point, somebody might have been, had their lives saved, or multiple people, for each time that thing gets hit. Vine and Hollywood, we'll put a roundabout in there, as well as at Bogart and Engstrom and Green Forest Drive. We're pretty close to, to coming along with that, with that design right now. That's a, that's a, that'll be a really good project, not only for safety, but also for reducing congestion in that area.
Yes, uh-huh. Assemblyperson Hale.
Thank, thank you, Madam Mayor. Are there plans for widening and slope flattening along the northern portion of Wassilla Fishhook? Because it's, once you get up, you know, past Spruce and Peck and all that, it really kind of narrows down, and it's pretty twisty. Is there any, anything in the works for that at any time soon, or?
Some of them inhale, the, from my, from my knowledge, there's no project in the works on that yet, but that's one of the reasons we had Mr. Post here talk about the CTP and the nomination process, and we're working closely with the borough staff on those, on those kinds of nominations. Okay, again, I mentioned the, the roundabout there on Bogart and Engstrom and Green Forest. Those are just the statistics. We're about seventy-five percent complete with the design. We just have, we're gonna have an open house, looks like a couple of days. Pioneer Peak Elementary learned all about the project, so come and see us. We'll, we'll talk in detail about it. We'll have materials to, you can see the, what the design looks like and all the features that are in there. One of the H S I P projects.
Oh, I'm sorry. Excuse me. Assemblyperson two, go ahead.
On, on the roundabout, does the Green Street and, and Engstrom, does that line up now to where the road is actually gonna go behind that Quonset Hut? Or is it taking out that Quonset Hut?
It's, it's the, I'm not sure, the Quonset Hut is on the?
Green Street side?
Green Forest side.
So this is the, this, this is right out of the plan set, this drawing I have here, and it shows that Green Forest Drive is going to be aligned up almost with the Engstrom there, so they all come together at the roundabout. Does that, does that help answer your question?
No, so what I'm asking is if I'm looking at the, the graph here, F oh seven.
Yep.
And there's like a little square box there, which I think might be the Quonset Hut. Are you taking that Quonset Hut out? Are you buying that property there?
I think yes.
So that's all gone?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, it's not gone now, but it, it will be.
No, no.
Yeah. What, what's going in there is a detention basin, a stormwater detention basin. That's the lowest part in the area, and that's what's gonna catch all the water. So we're gonna need that in order to get rid of the water, the drainage.
So that big circle is the detention basin?
I believe so. Yeah.
Okay. And Clint, if you could speak a little louder, people on the phone are having a little bit of a problem hearing you. Thank you very much, sir.
Let's head out to the west here, Vine and Hollywood. We're gonna reconstruct Vine Road between K G B and Hollywood. That'll include drainage, drainage improvements and a pedestrian pathway along there. And on the, there'll be a roundabout going in, Vine Road and Hollywood at the intersection, and then we're gonna do a pavement preservation. There's the timelines of those projects down there below. So the first two projects are gonna be construction probably out in twenty twenty-five, and then twenty-four for the pavement preservation project. Okay, now I'm gonna shift focus to the Community Transportation Program projects that the borough has, has sponsored. One of them is a Herman Road Extension, an upgrade, Parks Highway to Palmer-Wassilla. I showed you the, I can show you the, the schedule there. This is right off of the website there, which is on the bottom. Costs about twelve million dollars. Most of that's federal, ninety percent federal, and then you can see a construction is, we're aiming at about twenty twenty-six for, for that. It'll include a traffic signal at the Palmer-Wassilla Highway, and the road will have two lanes with a center lane, turn lane in between. Hammer Road Extension, an upgrade, similar to the past one, same two lanes with a, a two-way turn lane in the center with left turn pockets, a traffic signal at Bogart Road. We'll have pedestrian amenities and shoulders, wider shoulders, and hope to get that to construction for us by about twenty twenty-six, working hard on that goal. Costs about seven million. Selvin Road Extension, Phase Two, this is gonna connect the existing Selvin all the way to the Pittman Road area, so you can have an east-west corridor through there. It'll provide an alternative route to the Parks Highway, it's a major feature, fifty mile an hour speed limit to match the speed along Selvin. There'll be a separated pathway along that project, and a new frontage road near Meadow Lakes Elementary School in a trailhead parking area for Meadow Lakes Elementary School. We're getting close, hope to get that to construction by twenty twenty-four.
Madam Mayor. Assemblyperson hours, go ahead. I'm sorry for not knowing this on this, but you know, I look at, I look at the first stretch of Bogart coming out of Palmer to the, the roundabouts and, well, Colony, and that's got a really nice wide lanes, you got frontage roads, so you don't have driveways and all these intersections coming out like the PW Highway. So just on the Selvin extension, is it gonna look more like that section of Bogart, or is it still gonna have lots of accesses, ingresses and egresses from the road?
The purpose of that new frontage road near the elementary school will kind of take away that, have more access control to it, and then it will largely match the character of the improved section of, of Selvin and Bogart there. Yep.
Let the record show, Assemblyperson Yount and Assemblyperson Sumner have been online, but they have arrived in the chambers at six thirty-seven.
Is, is everybody able to hear me okay? I have a, all right. Trunk Road, also called Nelson Road, well, trunk road extension, but it is Nelson Road down there over, near Wassilla Creek on the flats. We're gonna replace the bridge there and do some approach work to that, elevating the roadway, put some pedestrian facilities in there, aiming at construction, hopefully late twenty twenty-three to twenty-four is when we're, when we're hoping we can get that, get that to construction. Fairview Loop Rehabilitation. This is being re, redefined in the current Amendment Five of the State Transportation Improvement Plan, which comments are due October thirty-first, but the idea is to get what we've currently already done design on out to construction as soon as possible in twenty twenty-four, and which would, I believe, include the safety improvements in there, the spot safety improvements, and then phase out additional work beyond that in a different phase. That's currently where we're at with that. All the news and the latest information will be on the website there. And now we have another batch of projects that are pretty much focused on what we call pavement preservation or repaving, basically bringing up asphalt and bridges to a state of good repair. So these are limited in scope, they're not rehabilitation projects or reconstruction, they're just, just keeping the pavement from falling apart. So these are the kinds of things that we do in there, we, in those projects. We put in new signs, new striping, signalization if necessary, and various road, road treatments and ADA, American with Disability Act improvements. So those are the, those are the kinds of projects this is for. These are the active projects that we have in the pavement preservation program in the valley. Palmer Fishhook Road, mile seven to seventeen. Hollywood Road, Vine, I already mentioned that one, Vine to Big Lake. Glen Highway sixty-six to ninety-two. The number in, the year in parentheses is when we hope to get these in construction. Wassilla Fishhook, Texan, Texal to Selvin, Bogart, trunk to Wassilla Fishhook Road, Palmer, Old Glen, and inner and outer Springer Loops. Big Lake Road, zero to three point six, including Church Road, Olive Church Road, and Big Lake Road from three point six to nine point two. As you can see, if you're familiar with any of those roads, you can tell that, why we put them in the pavement preservation program. Now, just real quickly, these are the, I get a lot of questions about what are your priorities for maintenance? This is our, our chart that shows what the, what the department's priorities are and what, what categories of roads get attention. And there's a nice map on our website there. There's a map that shows you all of that for the, for the whole state. And I wanna put a plug in here for October twentieth, between three and seven PM at the Menard Center, the sports center there. We're gonna have our annual, although it didn't happen last year because of all the COVID stuff, our transportation fair. All of our project managers will be there with all the materials to answer any questions and, and lay out and talk about all the projects and where they're at, and answer any kind of questions there. So hope to see everybody there, and please get the word out for us. And that's it. Any questions I can take for now?
Any questions from the Assembly or the Planning Commission? I guess not. Thank you very much, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll move to item B. I'm gonna invite Alex Senta to come up, and while he's coming forward, two quick follow-ups that Mr. Adler made. That was a great presentation, Clint, I appreciate it. A lot of great information in there. We'll make sure we get that posted online as well. But Clint mentioned the Community Transportation Program, Transportation Alternative Program, CTP TAP. So just for the Assembly, it's correct that at the end of the month, that notice of intent to apply is due. There's a resolution for that on next week's meeting for the Assembly, so that's already been prepared and advertised, and we'll talk about that again next week. And then just as a follow-up to the Seward Meridian Parkway, appreciate DOT support. We understand there's been a lot of frustration with parents, especially related to school access with the busing issues and everything, just further complicating things that, so District Administration, myself and a planner, and DOT staff will be at Career Tech High School tomorrow night for a parent meeting, just to talk a little bit about Seward Meridian Parkway, talk a little bit about how we plan and manage that. DOT will provide an update on the project, and we'll just kind of talk folks through where we are specifically for that project and those schools along that northern portion of Seward Meridian Parkway. So just wanted to make the Assembly and Planning Commission aware of that. With that said, I'm gonna turn it over to Alex Senta. He's gonna give you a tip twenty-one update, so we're taking the DOT stuff and then kind of looking at, at what borough staff are working on. Alex is our Project Management Division Manager over in Public Works. With that said, I'll turn it over to Alex.
Hi, everybody. I hope you're ready for winter. I'm not. Yeah, just a quick update on the tip twenty-one projects. Am I close enough? Can you guys hear me okay? Okay.
I think so. All right. Thank you.
So last fall, the November ballot presented all the projects here. Voters passed it. There was twenty projects. We started working on those pretty much right away. There, you can see them on the map here, and I'll go through a few and then open this up at the end for more discussion on all the progress. And I may flip back to this slide once or twice if there is any question, if there are any questions to go over. But this is what the voters passed right here. Pretty important question we ask on any project that we get handed, what are some of the issues we're trying to solve? And to us, to, to my staff anyway, the way we try to think about these things are, you know, this is why it's a project, and we really try to look at it from, starting from a high level and then zooming in to the details during design and planning. But this is a question we've asked on pretty much every project by now, and we're figuring out more on how to solve these things as we go through design. Just some examples on some of these, start with Fern Street. So the project here is to improve the road from K G B to Fairview, and just an interesting fact on that, there are actually three different owners or, you know, entities that basically maintain this road, state, borough, and city. So it's a, it's a strange stretch of road if, if you look at it from that standpoint. But one of the things- But one of the things the voters, you know, approved a pathway from. All the way from the north to the south, it, one of the other problems, narrow shoulders. Forest site distance, when you come to the, right near the center of the stretch. There's a pretty tight vertical curve with stop signs coming in to both sides. And then Fern Street just keeps a through movement in that area. And when you're looking at, when you're looking up and down, standing at those stop signs, it's. You, you get, I mean, you gotta kind of gun it sometimes and those are some of the things. We will try to address in a project like this, and then just some of the drainage, it's a pretty, the wet area. The picture here is just showing Cottonwood Creek. That doesn't show a lot of historic problems, but the area or the pipe is technically not to, to the standards. That we really should have and they're laid out in code, so that, that's probably gonna get an upgrade as well. Here's another one, it's pretty well-known. The problems on Shaw Elementary, so you can see, I guess my. Pointer. If you look at, it doesn't work on the TV. So. This is from Wasilla Fishhook looking into the school during some of the peak hours of people trying to leave and pick up their kids, you know. After they picked up their kids and the, the premise of the project was to just improve the situation and so the. Technically, the project we were handed was to just add a turn lane, add a left turn lane on Wasilla Fishhook. To get into this Paradise Lane into the school, and then once we asked our question, you know. What are the problems here we're trying to fix after the, the very first. We just did a, a simple. Traffic study out there with our consultant. And they really zoomed out a little bit and just, they analyzed some of the different. They actually took a count of everything during the peak hours, a few different days and things like that, and when you, when you look at it. There really is no simple solution, especially not just adding one or two features out on this intersection. So we've actually. We're trying to, we're trying to figure it out still, but. This is just one of the problems and I can't tell you what the solution is yet because we're still figuring it out, but. Another one of the compounding issues in this is that there's gonna be another. You know, or there may, there might be another school added just behind Shaw, a new charter school. In the next few years at some point, so. You can imagine, you know, that, that's only gonna. Compound this problem, and so. We, we're working through design on that and, you know, if we give another update soon, well, I'll, I'll be glad to. You know, share any of the, the solutions we do have. Lucille Street, similar to Shaw. This, this photo was taken around the peak time, not, this is not nearly as bad as it can get, but. You see Lucille Street running north and south there, this is looking south and then there's not much queue on the site. And then you actually see one car, I think, on the bike path, but sometimes you'll see this whole section. Of bike patches with cars parked on it, and so. Part of the goal here is gonna be from Spruce, all the way from Spruce to Selden. Just adding some, some shoulders and then probably something like a, a center turn lane and maybe a right turn lane. Just to add to the capacity and just help the congestion. Okay, another school access issue that we're trying to solve on this road, France runs down to. Oh, it's the Valley Pathways right there on the top of the screen. The. And I, I have experience in a situation like this, not on this road going to the school, but turning out onto the PW. Is just problematic, even with the new turn lane they added, it's, it's difficult. And it's unsafe really, and so just off the. The screen here, the project would be basically to run from the school, new, new roadway. To the. I'm upside down on this picture, so it's throwing me off. It'd be east, yeah, and then heading north to get to the Hammer Signal on PW. So that you're running the. Rush hour traffic out of the school, basically to a signal, much safer, more efficient. That's the goal here, challenges on that, we have basically all new roadway to construct. And there, there are some larger parcels, so that makes it a little bit easier on the, or quicker on the right-of-way acquisition. Just because there's not so many pieces to go get, but the entire road is gonna need new right-of-way through there.
Assemblyperson, I'm sorry, Assemblyperson Hale has a question.
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, more of a comment really, my, my kid graduated from Pathways this spring and, and last winter, she was like, why isn't there a, a signal light there? So, yeah, it's, it's, it's just that, it's that, it's that problem, so it's good to know that we're working on it.
Yep, and rather than add a signal, it was just to punch it over to the signal basically, so. And I would say, since the Planning Commission's here, I think you'd be proud of us because this is part of. A connection on the OS and HP, I think it is. That runs. East and west. Paralleling the PW in a different spot, so if we get Hammer over to that direction, it kind of adds to that. Goal. Okay, the, yeah, early phases of the design and most of these are happening right now. Most of the projects, not all of them, but most of them end up needing new right-of-way or easements of some sort. That can take a long time to figure out and to negotiate and. The, the cost, just the cost in general has been very volatile. Just since we've developed the ballot measure to present the estimates to the voters, I mean, we've seen. A lot of, you know, a significant increase, I just, I would just say in the last two years, some quick numbers I checked. Recently, we've gone up just in general about thirty to forty percent on a road construction project. Type, type bids. So it's going up pretty quick. And then just the labor shortages, I think it's really market-wide, including some in-house. Hiring struggles, so. The, the struggle's real there, but we do have. You know, we haven't, we have just enough and some dedicated staff that, that are working all these right now, so there is nothing. Just sitting or not being done, there, all these projects are moving forward. And we take this, this package. Right now, on the civil side of the House as our top priority. So just quick progress, I have more detail on each one if you need it. So all the projects are in design, that was a good milestone we hit a couple months ago. The next bullet would be, we consider from the borough. Side, we've transferred money for two projects that, that the city was gonna. I think, purchase some land for their depot relocation. And then to the DOT for. Some support on the signal on their Seward Meridian project, near the schools there. The next bullet, I don't have a lot of information, but we're, we're in discussion about the. The pathway project on Palmer Fishhook. To see if DOT might be able to. Include that in something that they have planned or. I'm not, I'm not quite sure at this point. But for, as far as a borough project, we don't have anything in design for that. Another one, actually the only one so far that has been completed as far as construction, Nelson Road. Nelson Road pathway was connecting from Moketons Elementary. Moving a mile north up to the subdivisions in there, just collecting a lot of the pedestrians. That are making their way to the school, and that was a pretty good success, that was done this year. And then for next season, I have six projects that we think we can get into construction. And those would be bid over the winter and spring to start up next season. This is just a couple of quick photos of Nelson. And then I think this is probably the most important slide, if you were to pick one. It just shows the overall schedule. And what we anticipate to be constructed each season. You can see the top middle there, twenty twenty-three, we have several pedestrian projects for the schools. Some paving in Caswell, road, the Cherry Lake near Houston. Catherine between Old Trunk and New Trunk. By Piner Peak. And then some work on Hidden Hills Road and Lakes Boulevard and Big Lake.
We have a question from Assemblyperson Yant.
Yep.
I hadn't flipped to this slide yet, so I feel bad, I was gonna ask you which six for next year, but now that's very clear.
There you go.
I do have a question though, because we're fully funded. Is it possible to expedite some of these, the twenty-five projects to twenty-four, twenty-four to twenty-three, or is it come back to what you're saying, we just? More time to prepare.
It's hard to just throw a bunch of money at it and get them done just like that.
Yeah.
I would just say, probably not. A lot of it's just you gotta get through design, determine where your boundaries need to be and go start your right-of-way acquisition, right-of-way acquisitions. We feel we, we have good leeway to hire out the services that we do need. But even then, you know, everything takes a lot of time to. Procure and just plan out and execute, so, but we do try to get as much of that low-hanging fruit as possible as quick as we can. That, that was kind of one of my other points is. You know, we are fully funded on this without doing the long-term bonds, bond sales. This was a priority for the Assembly, they pulled it off, we got. Some. Some help from the state, there was a grant that we, that was, that they re-appropriated about eight and a half million, went to this work. And then another big one just recently for thirty million, so.
Mm-hmm, go ahead.
Yeah, through the mayor to Mr. Yant, and really to the Assembly at large and really includes the Planning Commission as well, so like, when we talk about. The cycle, we're trying to create a cycle for transportation projects, alright, so what you see is. These, these guys have been moving out as if it was funded. Because we knew we'd have to go through design, so there haven't been any restrictions put on Public Works. With regards to the rate at which they can advance projects due to funding. Now, it happens to be where it a hundred percent funded, so that's why the Assembly just passed that resolution for tip twenty-three last meeting, last week. So, as you can see, if the Assembly decides to put it on the ballot and if the voters approve. Another transportation package next fall, you're looking at twenty twenty-four. In, into twenty twenty-five where you have all those projects in design, so, and as you can see, we'll only be on year two of construction, so. It starts to create a little bit more of a rhythm, you know, Tom Adams and I have spent some time talking about this and, you know, you're probably in a three-to-five-year window. But looking about how do we kind of get the bubble out of these projects, like in the past, the borough. Peaks and then valleys, and then peaks and then valleys, it's terrible from a budgeting perspective. And it's also terribly, terrible from a staffing perspective, so we're trying to find a way to kind of flatten that out, I mean, his. His sine wave that, that is that road on that slide works pretty good, actually, that's what we're kind of looking for is. To kind of even that out a little bit and come up with a better rhythm where we have smaller packages. Because it's gonna be way easier to forward fund those types of things, instead of having like a sixty or seventy million dollar. Package, and I know that's something some Assembly members have been talking about, so that's where we're headed. And I, hopefully, you know, we'll see how this goes, but I, I don't foresee. Any of these projects happening any faster just because they were funded.
I think what you'll see is if a tip twenty-three. Ballot measure, similar ballot measures approved, I guess next, about a year from now, next fall. You'll, you'll see that one-to-two-year overlap like Mike was saying, and that's, that's great. For the staff that we have and then also for the consultants and contractors, you know, if they can see that. Constant feed of, of work, it's just gonna be, it's gonna be more efficient. And so one thing I was gonna point out, you see the six projects for next year, I just went through them in my head real quick, those are the only ones we don't need any right-of-way on, so. It's just, you can go build. With the land you have, so that's the only reason they're a year or two ahead of the other stuff. So, yeah, I would say two to, two to three years is generally going from zero. To complete, or at least to start a construction project. If you need right-of-way, two to three years. I mean, even with the. I mean, our hands aren't very tied, when I think about maybe the complexity of like a DOT federally funded job. Ours, you know, they're very, they're basic compared to that kind of stuff, and even then, though, it's still a couple of years usually until you can get something done. So, did you want to talk more about the twenty-three or just, okay. Sounds good, that's all I had, any other questions?
Assemblyperson hours, go ahead.
Uh, kind of a commenting question, I mean, I just think it, the growth out here has been so exponential and we're just playing catch-up. On all these projects and, you know, how we try to get ahead, how we try to think about getting ahead on them. And the one thing you mentioned was right-of-way, and so like, it's one thing that slows down doing these projects is not having the right-of-way ahead of time and. Just thoughts on how we can, you know, maybe that's a teeing up a bigger discussion, but how we can try to get ahead on some of this. That's going on, so we're not always playing catch-up.
Mike's taking that one.
Yeah, that, that, through the mayor to Mr. Nowers, that, that is a difficult question, because I think. Part of that is you need to be able to engineer, I mean, this is civil work, so you really need some engineering to determine what your right-of-way needs are. And if, and if you end up going to a point, you know, Clint mentioned, getting to a point of condemnation, you're not ever gonna get there if you don't have an engineer. Have, have your design, you know, actually done and engineered, so. The idea that we would just have a pot of money to acquire right-of-way, I think is challenging. In that then, how do you define what those right-of-way limits are? Now, obviously, there are some things you can do from a planning perspective to set things aside, you know, into the future, we do do that. But if you really are trying to neck down what you would want to acquire, obviously, we want to limit that to only what we need. So you really are looking at how do you get the funding together to be able to start your design process and get to that point of acquiring right-of-way. And, and that's tough because you're talking about a significant amount of money. And we just don't have the area-wide powers to do that kind of thing, so. It really does kind of puts you back into the road service area conversation and, and it just, there's no easy answer there, it's, it's partly just a limited government. Framework to some degree, we'll continue to look at how we can chip away at that, but, yeah, it would definitely be ideal if we could design. You know, have those designs done, acquire a right-of-way. And then, and then move forward with construction funding, because we wouldn't be in the position we're in now with a sixty-one point one. Million-dollar package with inflation running whatever it is today. And not having a lot of ability to adjust, I think that's one of the challenges we have is. As these costs go up, you know, and I'm, I'm gonna speak a little bit out of turn for DOT maybe. You know, DOT is gonna get the benefit of increased federal funding through the, for, through the infrastructure bill, right? Some of their formula funding is gonna go up, so they're probably gonna have the ability to move some money around and make adjustments in the stip and whatnot into the future. Okay, I don't see anybody shaking no, so we're gonna assume that's generally correct, we are not gonna have that luxury, right? So, and it, it's not really a luxury per se, but that's gonna be a challenge for us moving forward, we're gonna have to get creative and kind of. Massage some of these designs to get to a point where we can build something that brings value. But maybe doesn't fully realize what we had hoped to accomplish in the beginning. And that's something Tom and I've talked about, like lessons learned from tip twenty-one is, you know, how do we bring forward? Better cost estimates and, and, and a little bit more definition around scope, I know that's been a frustrating point for Alex and it can be difficult for a project manager, so. We're learning and working on how do we get better with that, so that what we put on a ballot is. As close as we can reasonably get without having hired an engineer.
Okay, Assemblyperson Yon, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, comments more than anything. So I feel like, um, Mike will probably be I'm beating a dead horse here. We've talked a lot about this legislative priorities lately and different things. Um, you know, the bubbles that you talk about, I, I think our job here as a body to make sure those bubbles don't come and go is to during budget season, we need to start forward funding and setting money aside in the future for roads and then have our legislative priority be if, you know, hopefully try to get some match money out of the state quite often. I, I love the, the second class or second class borough, um, type government that we have. It, uh, it probably does slow us down a little. It requires us to ask the voters for permission, but I think they're going to be really inclined to support us if they know we're fiscally responsible, we're forward funding stuff, you know, we, we team together as it was a really awesome process to get this one funded. We, um, had some good amendments by different members of the body and we got her done and um, the state recognized that and stepped up and helped out. We would have got this funded without the state, but of course the more support we get, the better, and it does speed things up. So I think that's the approach we need to take in the future and, uh, I'm already anticipating this next year's budget season and, and seeing a line item in there for future road stuff, even though we haven't designated which project is going to go to yet. I think we need to plan ahead. So.
You need further comments from either the assembly or planning commission members? Okay, thanks Alex.
Thank you. And we'll, we'll be at the transportation fair as well with, uh, information about all these and more projects. So come join us.
Thank you. Uh, next item is item C.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm gonna invite Kim Solin up from our planning department and planning services division, and she's making her way to the mic. One last thing, uh, wanted to make as a follow-up point there. And what I really, the reason we set up items A and B the way we did. Um, I know there's a lot of residents that are frustrated, right? They're talking about we're playing catch up and different things. If you pay attention to those two presentations side by side or back to back, you see that there are a tremendous amount of projects in the queue. So if you look out five years from now, it can be pretty significantly different than what we're experiencing today. Um, so I do feel like, you know, just from a talking point for the community is there, there is a lot of progress on the horizon. And when I talk about, you know, some of the stuff DOT is doing with their projects, like what Clint, Clint shared tonight, aren't projects that are eight to 10 years out. Many of these projects are happening in the next two to five years. Um, and then you couple that with borough efforts and all of a sudden you're starting to really chip away at the problem. So just kind of wanted to highlight that when you put all that together, all of a sudden you realize like this is good, like we're, we're going to make some good progress here in the valley in the next several years. So with that said, I'm going to turn it over to Kim Solin. She's going to give you an update on MPO.
Great. Thank you, Manager Brown, Mayor DeVries, members of the assembly, members of planning commission. Thank you so much for inviting me to come up, talk about the MPO. It's one of my favorite projects right now. We're making really good progress. So I'm glad I get to give you an update. Um, so some of you have seen some of the MPO 101 information that we've provided before. Um, and for some of you, it's new information. So I'm going to talk a little bit about why we need to have one, what we've done over the past three years, what the next year looks like. And then kind of close with some changes related to public transit funding that we were surprised to learn about. Um, and so I just wanted to give you an update about that as well. So as many of you know, with the looming urbanized area designation, um, we are going to have to make some changes on how we plan for transportation infrastructure. Um, so with the urbanized area designation, we're expecting a portion of the core area to get this designation by the census. They were supposed to release it in April. They delayed it till July and now it's December. This December there, we are expecting them to release that designation. And what it will mean is that we'll need to form an, a metropolitan planning organization within one year of that designation. We'll also have to start managing our stormwater differently, but that's a topic for another presentation. So I just wanted to show you this map. So this is a map of the roughly the core area. Um, we have got some preliminary data from the census that, um, and the, the dark outline kind of shows what we think roughly they're going to say is our urbanized area zone. Um, the red, uh, parcels are highlighting it's a, uh, the criteria for urbanized area is a thousand people per square mile or 385, uh, dwelling units per square mile. The yellow shading is it's low density fill. So they think within the next few years, those areas will likely become red. So they're going to say this is your minimum, um, urbanized area zone. And then, um, as part of the MPO process is that the MPO, um, needs to look at, oh, yeah.
Can we go back?
Of course.
One slide.
Yeah.
So the low density fill, is that part of the urbanized? Okay.
Yeah, that's part of the urban, the, the urbanized area zone. And again, this is just a draft. We haven't received the final data. So we've done some in-house GIS, but that purple shaded outline is what we think is going to get that minimum boundary designation. It might look different though. There's still, there was a lot of problems with the 2020 census and, and reporting. So we might be surprised with what the minimum boundary map looks like. So this map here highlights, uh, one of the things the MPO will need to do is project 20 years out. So we'll get the minimum boundary designation from the census, the minimum urbanized area. Then we'll need to look at where do we think population is going to go over the next 20 years and propose that to be the MPO boundary. Because the MPO is a planning organization, we need to look at, look at the future needs of our transportation infrastructure, um, based on where our community is growing. So again, this is also just a draft. Um, we will be, um, probably doing a number of public meetings once the designation happens. Um, to fact check some of our assumptions about where we think the population is going to grow. Um, cause, cause you can see our proposed MPO boundary maps bigger than this minimum boundary designation. So like I said before, the MPO is a, is a primarily a planning organization. And whereas right now, when the DOT wants to do a project, they do their own planning, the borough wants a project, we do our own planning, the cities do their own planning. And we don't, we don't have a real robust system of coordination. And so once the MPO is formed, um, there will be membership from the cities, the borough, the DOT and the tribes leading the planning organization to be having a conversation about our community is growing. We're all responsible, um, as governments to care for the citizens' needs and to help provide for that infrastructure. And we'll be planning together where to use these federal funds within that boundary area. Um, the other thing to mention is that it won't just be roads. We'll be looking at public transit. We'll be looking at bike and pedestrian facilities and looking at the whole system in general. So as a planning organization, the MPO will be responsible for creating four main plans. And that will be the bulk of the MPO's work. So we'll need to create a metropolitan transportation plan, which is a 20-year plan that looks at, you know, the needs of the community over that long-term horizon, um, within the planning area. We'll also have to create a transportation improvement program, which is a four-year funding plan. So in the MTP, which is like a long-range transportation plan of which the borough has, where projects are programmed in over that long year horizon, we'll have to also be putting together that four-year funding plan for different projects. We'll often have to do an annual really detailed like work plan for the MPO staff and projects to explain how we're going to use the planning funds. Um, and how we're going to create these plans every two years. And then we'll have to have a robust public involvement plan. So the, the funding for the MPO, so it won't, unlike the MS4 requirements to manage stormwater that won't come with any federal funding to do these new, complete these new requirements. The MPO will get annual funding. It's formula funding. We'll get planning funds, about $400,000 a year. It'll be passed through funds through DOT, DOT from federal highways. And then roughly, we think there'll be about eight to 10 million dollars allocated to the MPO for capital, uh, projects. DOT will manage those projects. So they'll do all the construction and project management, but the MPO will plan the projects that um, they want to have happen. The one thing we will need to do related to funding is that we'll have to come up with match. So the, both for the planning funds and for the project funds, there'll be roughly a 9.3% match. That for the planning funds, all the participating organizations will come up with that match for the $400,000 a year. And we'll, I'll talk about the formula that we're proposing to you, to use, to create who, how much each entity has to pay for that. With the project match, depends on who the facility owner is. So if the borough is proposing a road in the MTP and then in the tip, um, we would have to come up with the 9% match for that project and then give it to DOT and they would manage the project. So since 2020, we've made some progress. We've had a lot of meetings. Um, we formed a steering committee in September. So that's mostly staff, um, level participants. Um, to kind of work through some of these work products and policies and plans that we're developing to form the MPO. Um, we've had representation and I'll show you that later from DOT and the borough and the cities and the tribes and transit and, and bike and pedestrian advocates. In 2021, we formed a pre-policy board. So that is, um, made up of leadership from all the organizations who've been participating at the steering committee level and that those we think will be involved in the MPO once it's formed. We've completed another, a, a number of interim UPWPs or work plans. Um, kind of as practice for what we'll have to do when we come in a, a real live MPO. Um, we've created a work plan for how we're going to create our metropolitan transportation plan. Um, and we created a work plan for how we're going to develop the boundary of our MPO. We finalized our public participation plan. We named ourselves Matsu Valley Planning for Transportation, our MVP for transportation. We didn't want to be fast, like, you know, Fairbanks is fast planning, Anchorage is AMAT, so we thought it would be a little bit different with MVP. So that's kind of fun. Um, we also did, uh, make a decision that the organization would need to be its own nonprofit organization. We spent a lot of time with the steering committee and the pre-policy board talking about, could the borough host the MPO? Could the MPO, you know, have office space at the borough and could some of the programs and staff be managed by the borough? And in the end, we just decided the borough couldn't do it. Um, we don't have the powers to do it and we didn't have the capacity to do it. The cities also didn't come forward. So, um, it was decided that we would propose to become our own nonprofit. And lastly, we did make recommendations on who would make up, this just happened last month, the final policy board and technical committee. Now the governor will have to, to form the MPO. And so they'll have to agree to all the documentation that we've come up with so far and all the decisions that we've made. Um, and I'll talk about that in a few more slides. So I just wanted to give you a, a slide about who's, who's representing the pre-policy board. So who's making the final draft recommendations to the governor about how the organization is going to be formed and who's going to be involved? So as you can see, we have leadership from the borough and DOT and the cities and the tribes. Um, and, uh, Valley Transit and Bike and Pedestrian Advocates.
Go ahead, sir.
Yes, uh, just one question. Uh, why is the railroad, oh, and now you flipped to Brian. Nevermind.
Yeah, this is the, this other list in the packet is the steering committee, um, representation. And so those are, those are folks that are at a staff level. So we, the staff at the steering committee level, we workshop documents, we workshop plans, we workshop drafts. And then they, you know, we're using Robert rules and they vote to approve the drafts. And then we floated up to the pre-policy board and then they, um, approved the draft. So yeah, the railroad's been involved. Um, we did just, and I apologize, I should have put it in the packets, but you'll see me again in December. When we approved the, um, policy board, I'll talk about it here. Um, at the last meeting, we voted who should serve on the policy board? Which organizations should be involved in governing this new organization? And it was voted that it should be a seven-member board, so a small board and only be made up of the local governments involved in the MPO. So that meant that, um, the, the, the bike and pedestrian and transit advocate, they lost a seat. Um, but I'll talk a little bit more about transit later. They're still going to have a voice in the future. So as you'll see, the Matsu Borough has two seats. And so the recommendation right now is that it would be the borough manager. Um, and either the mayor or an assembly member, and you all get to choose who that will be. And then it will be the city manager of Palmer, the mayor of Wasilla. Um, and I think both Chikaloon and Kinnick tribe have recommended a council member to serve on the board. Um, and then I think it's Wolfgang, um, from DOT, um, unless, or at least the central region director, that's his official title. So if he chooses to leave. So we didn't name people in the recommendation. It's just titles, uh, from each of the organizations. So in terms of an organizational structure, um, like I said, it'll be a nonprofit organization. It'll be governed by the policy board. So the representatives of, of the different governments that are participating. You'll have an executive director and then there'll be a number of different committees that the executive director will serve as secretary for, for those committees. And so they'll do some of the workshop, the, the projects and things, and then bring that up to the policy board. So it's our hope that once the MPO is formed and fully funded, um, that you'll have three, two, four staff. Um, there'll be an executive director, an executive assistant, a transportation planner, and hopefully there'll be enough funding to hire a transit specialist. And I'll talk a little bit more about why it's important to plan in a bigger way for public transit services in the core area and outside the core area or the urbanized area zone. So there's a bunch of, we're kind of like running towards the finish line right now. We've been meeting for a number of years. We've made a lot of progress. We've built great relationships. I feel really great about that, that there's lots of good collaboration and coordination happening. Um, but we still need to finalize the bylaws for the new organization. Um, we need to complete intergovernmental agreements and MOUs, um, for all the local governments on how we're going to work together, how we're going to handle match, um, how we're going to make decisions together. Um, we need to finalize the articles in corporation. Um, we need to figure out our policies and procedures for how we're going to run the MPO office and all the staff policies and procedures that will need to be created. We do still need to finalize the MPO boundary. Uh, we can't do that until the census releases their urbanized area designation. So we're kind of on hold on that. There is a requirement that the MPO, um, have separate agreements with the tribes, um, for meaningful consultation. So even though the tribes will likely be part of the MPO and serve on the policy board, we still need to have an agreement that speaks to how we're going to go speak to the tribal council and the tribal citizens um, about all of these projects and plans and their projects potentially would get programmed into the metropolitan transportation plan. We hope to submit, as the typo here, the operating agreement package to the governor. What, um, says January, it's probably likely going to be March. Before that package is finalized, we will bring it to the assembly and potentially planning commission for you to look at it and approve. Um, and then once the MPO is for, formed, we will need to, well, someone will need to, um, move forward and finalize that nonprofit corporation paperwork.
And, um, our assembly person that's online is having a difficult challenge. So would you speak a little louder, please?
I am so sorry. Normally I am the loudest person in the room and, um, I, I was not doing that today. So yes, I apologize. I will speak louder, um, and get closer to the mic. So, uh, like I said before, the governor will form the MPO and we need to complete these foundational documents to submit a package to the governor so that they can review it and formally recognize uh, MVP or Matsu Valley, uh, transportation, planning for transportation as the MPO for the Matsu. Um, so we need to complete the operating agreement, which is a technical document that talks about who's on the policy board, how we're going to work together, how we're going to submit reports. Clarifies all the plans that we're going to do. We also have to submit those bylaws that we are in draft form right now with the representation or the recommendation of who's on the policy board and technical committee. You have to submit that boundary, um, map. So we're hoping to submit that in March. We could submit it earlier, but I will come back to share that document with you before it goes off to the governor. We will also have to have the Matsu Borough, um, legal department review all those documents and also give it their blessing as well. So again, a little bit more about the timeline. You all, um, approved a, a resolution of support last month to, to request that the governor, um, provide some seed money for the MPO. Um, I'm happy to report that that package from the cities, the tribes and the borough was completed last week and sent off to the governor's office. So everybody approved a resolution of support for that. And for the, if I didn't mention it before, why we're asking for seed money for the MPO, even though the federal, um, highways is going to, are highways is going to give us money for planning. Because the MPO is going to be a nonprofit, it'll be a baby organization. It won't have any bank account. It won't have any money in reserves. And so all the funding that, um, we get will have to submit for reimbursement payment. I'm pausing to see if I'm talking loud enough yet. Okay, they're not, they don't need me to talk louder. Um, so we need a, a pool of money set aside that buys us some lag time. Um, because it may take DOT a little while to submit those reimbursable payments. And without having a bank account, we wouldn't be able to wait very li- long and it would cripple our baby organization. The other thing we need to do is that, you know, each of the organizations that are going to be members of the MPO will need to submit a one-time membership fee, um, and then submit annual dues money to help cover that match for the planning projects. And the DOT will be a representative of the MPO. They don't have a mechanism to pay for their own dues, um, and fees. And so some of the money from, that requested from the government. from, that requested from the governor will be able to cover DOT's costs so they can participate. So again, finalize the operating agreement, hopefully December, January, submit that to the governor in March. Hopefully, the MPO will form in July, and then, once it's formed, we'll submit that nonprofit corporation paperwork in July to September. Hopefully, we'll get our letter soon, and all of this is preparing to be ready to become or to receive federal funding in October of 2023 to begin some of the work of completing all the plans for the MPO and being a real live organization. Again, I already mentioned this, this was just the reason why we were asking for seed funding.
How much longer do you think?
I think I have six more slides, but I'm happy to, because I'm going to talk about transit, so it's kind of a different shift, and so I can pause here.
Be a good time to pause then, okay?
We don't have to take an official break, he just needs to dial back into the conference line. Okay, so just a brief innings, please.
Caleb, you can come dial in.
which literally means stand up and stretch your legs.
Joining conference.
Hey, I can hear.
That extension is not valid.
Assemblyburne, is that you?
Hi, it is.
Oh, perfect, and can you hear much better now?
Yeah, I can actually hear something going on.
Excellent. Assembly, please come back somewhere, can call the meeting back.
So we can have the assembly take their seats, please.
Will the assembly member take her seat, please?
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I think one other thing I, two other things I forgot to mention, the DOT has been supporting us for the past three years with planning funds to hire consultants to help us organize all the pieces and parts that go into forming an MPO, so I want to thank you guys for doing that. And also, we hope next spring to be hiring a, if, an executive director or a project manager until the MPO is fully formed, because right now, planning has been playing that role, and the MPO really does deserve its own staff, so hopefully that will be possible next spring, assuming the timeline flows the way we imagine it will. So we have been having monthly meetings. Those meetings are open to the public, you all are welcome to join if you would like to call in. We also have a website, and it's kind of in development, but it's looking pretty good right now, and it's MVPMPO.com. It has the recordings and meeting video on there, so if you wanted to listen to some of that, some of the past meetings and past discussions, that would be available, and then all of our agendas and packets and all that information is there as well. So just to wrap up, I just want to say a couple of things about public transit and some of the things that are changing as a result of this urbanized area zone, and it's something that I wasn't thinking about or didn't know about, but this is also going to cause us, the Borough, to kind of run a little bit towards making a plan for how we're going to support public transit in a different way. So right now, Valley Transit, Sunshine Transit up in Talkeetna and Chickaloon Area Transit are our main public transit providers in the region. Other than Chickaloon, Sunshine Transit and Valley Transit receive rural transit funding, and it has a special number, and it's in a different slide. And I think the state gets formula funds, and it disperses them statewide, but these entities are able to apply for the funds, and that's what they're using for operations and for capital infrastructure, like buses and things like that. As of 2017, we're updating a plan right now, so I don't have current ridership data, and COVID kind of changed what was happening, but there is close to 400,000 rides happening a year via public transit services, both with the three core providers and health and social services providers. Valley Transit is offering 14 round trips per day commuter service to Anchorage, that's significant, I didn't know it was that many buses. Sunshine Transit does have the only fixed route in the Valley, coming, I think, twice a week from Talkeetna area down to Palmer and Wasilla, but most of the rides locally, not commuter rides, are being delivered call and response. So people make an appointment to get a ride to get to work, or get to the grocery store, or get to the doctor's office, or get to boys and girls clubs, and that ride is organized and dispatched in that way. So that's a little bit of demographic about what's happening currently on the landscape. So, once we get the urbanized area designation, nonprofits, there'll be another round of funds that will come to the urbanized area to support urban public transit, and that will mean that Valley Transit will no longer be eligible for the rural public transit funding that they've been receiving. And nonprofit organizations are not allowed to receive to be direct recipients of the urban transit funding. And so we've been told by the DOT that they are likely going to name the Borough as a direct recipient so that we can accept these funds and then deploy them to the providers. So that's going to mean that we're going to need to figure out how to stand up a grant program, we're going to have to create policies and procedures around accepting that money, we're going to have to figure out how to deal with the capital infrastructure and buses. We might need to retain some level of ownership of the buses, but we lease them out to our grantees, we're going to have to track all that data. And then there's also the match issue. So, right now, Valley Transit is receiving these federal funds for the rural area, and they have a 90-10 match, so they get 90% of the funds from the federal government, and they come up with a 10% of the match, and I think, I guess my latest numbers is that last year, Valley Transit had to come up with about $500,000 in match. So if we think that the urban area formula fund will probably bring about $2 million a year to the core area, that means $2 million of match needs to be found, non-federal match, and so that's a lot more money than is currently on the table to support Valley Transit's match requirements, and so some thought needs to go into that, where is that going to come from? Let me see what my next slide is, just to make sure. Okay, so, I guess I'll go back. So, we've been talking internally about what are we going to do to stand up a new program to support public transit services, and how are we going to do that? Like, if, because if we don't do something, then all of a sudden, in 2023, potentially Valley Transit won't be eligible for funding, and then we will have no, they'll have no access to do some of, a bulk of the transit provision that they're doing. So we kind of have to run towards figuring out that problem, I think. So the MPO will get a slug of planning money specific for public transit in the urbanized area, and so they'll probably do some of the future planning, and then they will program some of the infrastructure needs, capital infrastructure needs for public transit into their tip, so that it's all part of the planning work and the infrastructure development that the MPO is doing. So that's how the MPO is connected to this urban transit funding issue. But in terms of next steps for the planning department in the Borough and working with Valley Transit and our other providers and talking with DOT Community Transit Program, is they have some planning funds available that we will not be eligible for once we become an urbanized area, and so we're working really hard to put together a scope of work and to apply for some of these funds to look at building a program so that we could be prepared for these changes when they happen. There's still a lot of unknowns right now, I just wanted to make you aware that that's a big change that we weren't prepared for, and for the most, you know, the Borough has supported public transit by doing other match funding, you know, Sunshine Transit, we gave Sunshine Transit some match funding to build a new facility, and we've given Valley Transit different times funds to support for match, to help with buying new buses, but we're just going to have to play a different role than we have because we've been pretty hands off with transit and let the nonprofit community take care of transit needs, but because there'll be a barrier now to accessing the federal funding, we kind of have to get involved, but I'm not, I don't know what that totally looks like, but I will be happy to come back and talk with you all about things that we're discovering once we get the grant and start doing some of that work. And that's all I have.
Questions? Yes, uh-huh. Assembly question, now, let's go ahead.
Committee Member, through the mayor. So thank you for that, what a huge amount of work and lift that's been going on there. So I know the MPO process will kind of come before the Assembly in certain ways, is there a way the MPO process comes before the Planning Commission is, or is this more a document that, or not document, but the MPO will play into Planning Commission decisions in the future? I'm just trying to figure out how the Planning Commissioners would be involved in this.
Yeah, I haven't, I have just been thinking about bringing things before the Assembly to sign resolutions of support and agree to, you know, memorandums of understanding, but it could flow through the Planning Commission to the Assembly like that, that would, that would be appropriate, but I haven't, I hadn't, hadn't thought about that. I'm sorry, louder.
Any other questions? All right, thank you. Very good, thank you.
Thank you again, Kim, for letting me interrupt, I'm sorry.
The next item on our agenda is of planning code changes, and Mr. Brown, you have a staff report?
Yeah, I want to invite Alex Strawn up, our Planning Department Director, he's going to talk to you about some upcoming planning or code changes that are in discussion.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Mayor, members of the Assembly, members of the Planning Commission, Alex Strawn, Planning Director for the Borough. I hope each of you has the handout that is associated with these planning changes. They are, the very left column, they are numbered 1 through 27, and so as I, I don't have a fancy presentation for you this evening, and it's not going to be very long, so as I go through this, I will reference the number on the very left when I'm speaking about different ordinances, and I think every one of these will go through the Planning Commission and then go to the Assembly. I want to give sort of a brief description of some of the big ones that are on this list, and then also answer any questions that you have about any of these code changes, whether they're housekeeping, Assembly-directed, or high significance. So, so, starting out with the Assembly-directed, I think most of you are probably familiar with the ones on here, the ones, two that are coming your way are the repeal of 1705 and 1706. The 1706, which is the electrical generating delivery facility repeal, will be for public hearing in the November 22nd meeting, and then 1705 will follow it up after, the next meeting after that. The Planning Commission has weighed in on both of those and has recommended not adopting those ordinances. We do have two marijuana ordinances requested by Assemblymember Hale that will address, because onsite consumption is legal at the state level now, this, this was an attempt that's done before, but we're bringing it back where it will address parking, loitering, and secondhand smoke associated with onsite consumption, and then it will also turn cultivation facilities into an administrative permit and get rid of some of the restrictions associated with those. We do have the land use permit coming back, that's going to the Planning Commission, I think at their next meeting, it's been introduced. I, there is an error here, I believe that Assemblymember Yunt is officially the sponsor, although at the last joint Planning Commission Assembly meeting, it was Sumner and Yunt who both kind of said out loud that we should maybe consider bringing that back. We, as many of you probably know, we had a land use permit years ago that was sort of a very simple process that allowed builders to submit something that would ensure that they are in compliance with our setbacks, with our floodplain regulations, with our, if we have the special land use districts, it sort of catches that and ensures that whoever's going to do some building is aware that these regulations exist, and we've, we've taken what was in place before, modified it to make it easier, make more sense, and less onerous than what it used to be, but still accomplish the mission of avoiding sort of nightmare scenarios when buildings are built incorrectly. And I'm going to go through these really fast, if, if you have any questions or would like me to pause on something and elaborate, I'm happy to do that. We have Beverly Lake, Lake Management Plan coming forward, there's a process in code that allows residents of a lake to bring it forward, and that should come to this board in December of 2022. We have Title 43 amendments, which is our subdivision code, the Plating Board actually sort of did some work sessions and worked with our plating staff to come up with some changes to just, really just do general cleanup and clarification of our subdivision code. Setback amendments, Assemblymember Yunt and Assemblymember Two have been requesting that, you know, as many of you are probably well aware, we have likely hundreds of setbacks violations within the Borough, and this would provide some relief to the people who have setback violations. What exactly that looks like, what is going to be required as part of that, if not a full on repeal, is yet to be decided, but that should come, I have that as March 2023 because it'll be a referral, which is 90 days, so the earliest I could get it to the board for referral would be November, so that kind of puts us, puts us into February, March timeframe. Lake Management Plan Implementation Process Update, so we've recently had some lake management plans, it's sort of shed some light on the deficiencies in our code, some things that maybe need to be corrected, as well as a decision by the Board of Adjustments and Appeals that was sort of different than what my opinion of code was, so this would clarify some things in code as well as fix some of the processes associated with lake management plans, and if you do have specific questions about that, I could, I could dive into that. And then, Assemblymember Two has requested gravel amendments, changing the threshold at which a permit is required from 2,000 cubic yards to 10,000 cubic yards, which I plan on bringing, bringing to this board for referral in November. Now, this, this next category is mostly staff-derived, just in, sort of swimming in code, day in and day out, staff has identified some deficiencies that really need to be worked, and a big one being our flood code. So our flood code is sufficient, it's working, but it is, it is based off a model FEMA flood code that is, that meets the minimum requirements of the Code of Federal Regulations. The problem with it is that there are many federal requirements that we have to require as part of our permitting process, and it's not in our code. So somebody who wants to go through the permitting process has to not only become familiar with our code, but become familiar with the Code of Federal Regulations. What I would like to do is sort of incorporate some of those federal requirements into our code, as well as some of the FEMA bulletins, so that when people go to apply for a permit, it's all there in front of them, and they know what they need to do. I'm hoping that once we finish that, that that will become the new model flood code that FEMA adopts. We, 1736 Residential Planned Unit Development is a code that was adopted, I believe, back in the 80s. It's, it's a section of code that I think was well-intended, that provides incentives for high-density residential. code, as well as some of the FEMA bulletins, so that when people go to apply for a permit, it's all there in front of them and they know what they need to do. I'm hoping that once we finish that, that, that will become the new model flood code that FEMA adopts. We, 1736 Residential Planned Unit Development is a code that was adopted, I believe, back in the eighties. It's, it's a section of code that I think was well intended, that provides incentives for high density residential units to be developed, sort of notwithstanding some of our other regulations in Title 17 and Title 43. It, it provides incentives. The problem is it's really confusing and restrictive, and therefore has not been used at least in the past 15 years. And I propose that we either get rid of it or fix it to actually have it meet the, the intent that was originally put in place for. And, and these high significance category, these are, the reason why they're in that category is because they're potentially very staff intensive. They'll take a lot of time, they'll take collaboration, but they also have potentially large impacts on, on members of the borough. Adult businesses needs to be reworked after a Supreme Court case dealing with adult businesses. It's, it's a, we need to, we need to take a look at our code and potentially modify it to be in accordance with the, the Supreme Court case that sort of set some precedence. I know that the Assembly rarely likes to reduce the public process. Typically, the more public process, the better. But with the Title 43 elimination of common lot lines, imagine you have two pieces of property and you want to get, and they, you own both of them and you want to get rid of the line in between the two. That should be a very simple process. And I've sort of posed the question, what comment could we possibly receive that would make it so that we wouldn't do that? And there's really no good answer to that. It is, it has no effect on the neighbors whatsoever. So I propose that we streamline that process. Right now, we actually do public notification and a, a public hearing and everything like that. And I, I think it would be more appropriate to have that process be ministerial, so it could just be done in-house. So the title, number 15, Title 11 Right-of-Way Construction Permits. Right now, we, so we did a good job of getting our driveway standards into borough code. One thing that we have, we do not have is if somebody wants to develop in a right-of-way that's not associated with a subdivision, we don't have a section of borough code that addresses that. We don't have some master manual that addresses that. We really have, it's, borough code says the public works, this director decides how it's decided. And so we basically take all of our past permits and apply those standards into our permits going forward. So I would like, I don't know where the design criteria manual and borough code starts and ends in this project, but my plan is to work with the Public Works Department to have clear criteria if you're going to be developing in a right-of-way outside of a subdivision, whether it's going to be a footpath or a road. There should be clear standards for what is required.
Go ahead, sir.
Mr. Strawn?
Yes.
Based on our recent experience, I, I think you should address mailboxes, not just gang boxes, but individual mailboxes, which are technically in the right-of-way.
I absolutely agree. And, and we do have, yeah, no, I, I agree. That's a, that's a rabbit hole we can go down for sure. We do have a requirement for any encroachment within the right-of-way, requires a permit. However, historically, we've not required permits for mailboxes within borough rights-of-ways. So that's a, that's an interesting topic you bring up there for sure.
Assembly person, Yount, go ahead, sir.
I believe, is, is there not a specific working group getting put together for this winter just for that? I believe, or I might have heard there was a work group getting put together for that.
So we've been really focusing on cluster boxes. We want, we need to, we have been regulating cluster boxes. They often have a lot more traffic and snow plowing and, and there's more construction in the right-of-way than individual mailboxes. But I think both of them are things that need to be addressed. They do pose potential safety hazards if they're done incorrectly. And then, so the housekeeping ordinances, there's 16 through 27. These, although they're housekeeping, they're, nobody notices or cares about them until you're actually working in that section of code, and it's like, oh my gosh, this needs to be changed. And so over the years, I've sort of collected these different things. For instance, I, the number 19, 1725 Talkeetness Bud. In the definition of temporary structures, it has the planning director approving some, whether a temporary structure can be allowed or not, but there's no, there's no standards, there's no, there's no criteria for which the planning director makes that decision. And, and the Talkeetness Community Council actually requested that we kind of visit that section of code and, and come up with a change to address it. So some of these, they're, they're housekeeping, but they're also, they potentially do have significance when you're actually working in that section of code. I'm happy to answer any questions that you have about these or, yeah.
I know it's not a deep dive this evening on all of these, but could you speak specifically a little bit in, at least to line item 24? This is confusing to me.
Yeah, so line item 24 is 1748 Mobile Home Parks. And the section of code that, for whatever reason, we were looking at this section of code, and it says that a permit is required prior to clearing, grading, or excavating. So if somebody goes and clears a lot with intent of putting a mobile home park up, they're, they're in, in violation of borough code. It's not right. Anybody, you know, and it's very difficult to enforce because you can't really predict what they're, they're going to do. So it doesn't make sense to have it there. That truly is a cleanup section of code, but still would be nice to clean it up.
That's why it's confused, it's just, it would be, you would be trying to pin them in the corner on their intent, right? And so it'd be hard to prove.
Correct.
That makes sense. Thanks.
Deputy Mayor?
Number 17, encroachments. What do you mean, remove requirements for encroachments on borough-owned land?
Yeah, so this is one where we have two different requirements for the same thing in different sections of code. We have Title 23, which is our land management code. If somebody's going to put a road or do something on borough land, they would go through our land management division and deal with Title 23. It's also in 11 dot 10, which is encroachments in borough rights-of-way. That's just a cleanup so that we can, we can be very clear what section of code you're dealing with.
Yes. Alex, 27, trash and junk, can you expand on that a little bit?
Yeah, so right now, if you were to really read 8.5 and O, junk and trash, to the letter of the law, one could come to the conclusion that impound yards are technically a violation of borough code. And I don't believe that's intent. I believe that impound yards, you know, you even, you could even draw the conclusion that used car lots require a, you know, a, a junkyard permit potentially. We don't treat it like that, but it'd be really nice to make it crystal clear in borough code what is not allowed and what is allowed.
Yes. Go ahead, sir.
Thank you. Two questions, turning you back to high significance, item number 13, the adult businesses. You referenced an opinion from the Supreme Court, was that the state or the US Supreme?
I believe, it was the US Supreme Court.
And do you happen to know the name of the case? What the issue was? Is it a First Amendment issue?
Yeah.
Okay. I'll, I'll, that's probably.
I know it has to do with freedom of speech.
Okay, so it's a First Amendment issue?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks, I want to look into that. And then in Assembly Directed, item number nine, could you give us some more details about that, please? Just, I mean, I don't want you to take up too much time, but thumbnail sketch would be great. Thanks.
Sure. So there's two different things here. One had to do with Morroville Lake. There is a, there was a question of the way the code is worded. I, I drew the opinion that personal watercraft are a type of motorized watercraft, and the Board of Adjustments and Appeals came to a different opinion. Granted, the code, the code is not perfect. And one thing I would like to do is make it so that the code is very clear of whether, whether one fits under the other or not, because it has implications on what is allowed in different water bodies. The other thing is how the voting occurs. Right now, some people who are within 600 feet of a water body get a vote. There's a question of should only lakefront people get a vote? Should people get one vote for, per parcel that they own, or just one per person? There, there's questions of the procedure associated with lake management plans that needs to be addressed.
Assembly, Assemblyperson Hale?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. In regards to number two, I had a, a motion that I would like to make if it would be appropriate at this time, or?
I don't think we do.
What kind of motion are you talking about?
Uh, directing staff.
You could probably bring that up in comments if you wanted.
In comments?
On what it is. But we do have a regular meeting next Tuesday, so you might want to save it for that.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions from Assemblymember? Yes, Assemblyperson Yount, go ahead, sir.
Line item 26 on the back.
Yeah, so 8.40 and 8.41 are, that's alcohol and marijuana referrals. So anytime a alcohol or marijuana facility is either a new one coming in or their, their license is being renewed, there is a borough process. We check to see if they are, if their taxes are paid up, if their, if their actual development or their business is in accord, is in compliance with borough law. And there may be, we may say this is not in compliance with borough code as it is right now, and there's no recourse for them. So the request has been to add a, a appeal process if they disagree with our determination on that.
Further questions or comments from Assembly or Planning?
Number eight, so setback amendments, I know you, you talked about a little bit. Is that to, there's a lot of violations out there, is that to kind of give it all the all the income free to those? Or is it to change the setbacks that we currently have, or both, or you could just a little elaborate?
So I'm still working out the details of that. I don't know, I, I'm hoping to work with Assemblymember Yount and Assemblymember Two to bring forward one ordinance, but I may end up bringing forward two ordinances, depending on how that works out. But the idea is to allow, create a pathway, if you are within 75 feet of a water body, whether your building was built after the, the regulations were adopted, or whether they have some sort of non-conforming status, that they have a path to becoming a legal structure. That, that's the idea, whether it's repeal of the water body setbacks entirely, or whether it is allowing them to go closer with certain stipulations.
For the questions or comments from the Assemblymembers or Planning Commission Members? All right. I think you've done it, sir. Okay, the next item on our agenda is item E, Assembly and Planning Commission Communications. Assemblyperson hours.
Thank you. So I know I'm standing between us and a German, try to keep it short, but I feel like both these bodies are important to the borough. I think the Planning Commission particularly affects people's lives and livelihoods, and you guys more maybe even than us see where the rubber hits the road in terms of some of the conflicts that come up in this borough and, and trying to resolve them. So I just wanted to kind of, since we're all here and we don't get together that often, just talk about communication. And so there's two, two issues, I'm just curious from the Planning Commission level and Assemblymembers could jump into, but do you feel like the Assembly is doing enough of a good job listening to, to your input when you give it? And I, and I, from my perspective, I would say it's improved now that you're doing the resolutions to let us know, you know, why you voted the way you are. And then on the reverse end, is it, is it clear for the Planning Commission, especially on some of this Assembly-directed things that are coming to you, that it, it may just be one Assemblymember, not the entire Assembly, or a couple of Assemblymembers? And is it clear why it's coming to you? You know, whoever's proposing it, it, I always think it's way more helpful to know what the problem is you're trying to solve in order to, to look at the potential solution. So I just kind of wanted to open up a conversation and see on those two things, are we listening to you? And, and do you feel like you're getting enough, when you get something from us, that there's enough of a statement that goes forward to you? You know what, what problem we're trying to solve on our end that we're asking you to take a look at?
Yeah. I, I like, through the mayor, I like the communication, and I understand why things are sent our, our way for us to scrub or maybe make some changes. But to be clear, the Assembly affects people's lives far, far more than the Planning Commission does. The Assembly sets law, sets code. The Planning Commission follows that code and makes sure everything's in line. So, but I, I like the process and I, and I like us getting together and have this, have these discussions. But I think, I think it's working the way we do it. Yes, go ahead, sir.
I would say, so two-part question. The first part, you know, you, you as the Assembly asked us some time ago to be better about communicating with you about why we make the decisions we do, and I think we have gotten better at that. And I feel like that first part is working pretty well. With regard to the second part, though, there are times when we get, we're asked to decide things, and the community comes in and they're, they're very much, or the people at least that in the community that show up and are vocal about the issue are very much on one side, and there's sort of nobody else on the other side. So we're wondering like, what prompted this? Was it industry? Was it, you know, why did this particular, why did this Assemblyperson send this to us? What, what's the, what's the reason? And, and so in, in those instances, it would be great to at least get a written, you know, statement of, as to why, you know, they think it's important, if not have somebody come in and testify. That's all, just two cents. Thanks.
Is there comment? Yeah, Deputy Mayor?
Yeah, so I, I mean, I guess maybe I'd address that at least in, in regards to a referral I recently sent. I, I don't believe that what was in code was working, or at least it, it was creating a public process, but not a substantive one. There was no opportunity for it to actually impact, you know, the actual projects that are being proposed. It was just to go out, stir up the community, gather public input, check the box, and you're done. So I was, I refer to repeal, but I'm open to recommendation from the Planning Commission. I just don't think that what we should have is a broken process that, that doesn't have any substance to it. So I start with a repeal, and if anybody has input, then, you know, I welcome it.
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, I, I'd just like to say, you know, we are sometimes the first face for a lot of those legislative things, and, and I understand, you know, we're not a political board. So sometimes we're just running things up the flagpole to, to see what the community has to say. And I think we've done a pretty good job, especially the last year, year and a half, of reflecting that in our decisions, like the repeal of the specific one that's coming. Other ones, I, I'll say I rely heavily on staff. Like Mr. Strawn said, you know, when something gets referred to the Planning Commission, the planning staff is working closely with the Assembly to make sure that what we see reflects what the Assembly was thinking, or the Assemblymember was thinking. And so I feel like things, things work and staff is a key. And I think none of us should be shy about reaching out to each other and, and finding out, you know, what, what was the intent of something if it's unclear. You know, we've all got, we've all got five minutes to, to clarify things and save everybody a lot of time.
Further discussion? Yes, Assemblyperson Yount.
It's more of a comment than anything, but I, you know, we're, when we decide we're going to take something up, there's a few different ways to go about it. You can ask for no time period, you can ask for a 30-day referral, 90-day. I think it's important to, the more public process, the better, right? Government's not supposed to happen overnight. I think that's for good reason. And so this, I, I know it might seem frustrating sometimes, and maybe we could do a better job of letting you guys know why it is that we're referring something over, but it's important that it has that referral process. why it is that we're referring something over, but it's important that it has that referral process. I don't, I don't think that I've ever sent anything over that wasn't a ninety-day. I want to give everybody plenty of time for input. And I think out of respect for the process, it works better that way. But by all means, you know, if you ever have questions too, and my name's attached to something, you call anytime, so.
Further questions or comments by the Assembly or Planning Commission members? Yes, go ahead.
I just would sort of echo that. I think one of the things that we have been pretty consistent about in the Planning Commission in the years I've been on, is really respecting and wanting public participation and public comment. And we, I think we believe that that's one of the most vital things, even if we make a decision that does not go along with what they can't come with, at least they've had a chance and we've been able to hear the concerns that they bring. So I think we, at least in my experience, we always go back to public comment whenever we can and how much we can get. So I thank you for that comment.
Further comments, questions? All righty, Assembly person hours, since that was your item that was on the agenda, do you feel that you accomplished what you would like, or?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that, and I appreciate Stafford's comments about, you know, we may be the body that makes the law, but you guys sometimes have to implement it and face the public. And so, and so I also think that you're a good resource for, for us to hear from. And we don't always have time as Assembly members to watch every Planning Commission meeting. And you probably don't have time to watch all of our meetings. So, you know, if there's room, maybe for some of these things to have a, you know, I think just talking about it is good. If it doesn't seem to be working, then maybe there's room for sort of a official way to have a statement attached from whoever's asked to bring it forward to explain why they're, we're doing it. But I just kind of wanted to have the discussion on it, and it sounds like it's working pretty well, so.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now we're next, Mr. Chairman. Do you want to go ahead and take comments from your Planning Commission members?
Sure. Commissioner Rubio, any comments?
No.
Commissioner Allen?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Kendeck?
No comments.
Commissioner Glenn?
None.
Commissioner Chesbrough?
Yes, and I would just say this will be my last joint meeting because my term is over at the end of the year. And I, I have learned a lot in this last six weeks, six weeks, six years. And I really do appreciate that we have these meetings. And I appreciate all that I have learned in this amount of time, and I want to just thank you.
Thank you, and I'd just like to add, this is also my last meeting. In six years, it's been very enlightening. I've got a huge amount of respect for the staff. As borough resident, we're lucky to have them, they get a lot done. And I appreciate you guys' service and stepping forward representing us.
So on our end, Mr. Attorney, do you have comments? Mr. Manager? Madam Clerk? Okay.
Wait, I do have a question.
Okay.
Mike, Tim was asking a question about seventeen oh five, and I couldn't remember the number. And I know it's coming up, I think you said you wanted to come up on the twenty-second.
Yeah, through the mayor, I believe it's introduced next week. Alex is looking right now, I think it's introduced for public hearing on the twenty-second.
That's seventeen oh six. I thought they had seventeen oh five come in soon, too.
Okay, so then the plan would be to have it for probably, I think, the December sixth meeting? For public hearing? So that means it would be introduced on November twenty-second.
Does that help you at all, Assembly member Hale?
Okay, so for the Assembly comments, Assembly person two, comments, sir? Assembly person Hale?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to make a motion to direct staff in conjunction with the Planning Commission to develop standards around seventeen oh five for Assembly consideration. And I'd like to speak to it briefly, if I could.
Yeah, I don't think we're supposed to do more, you can say that you would like to recommend, but I don't think we're going to have, we can't have a vote.
Sure.
You can have a vote?
Oh, okay.
It's just, it's awkward, it's only going to be the Assembly voting on it, it's not going to be everybody, it's just awkward, but we can. It is advertised as a, as a meeting.
Okay, so go ahead, Ben.
So as Assembly member Sumner was saying, seventeen oh five has, does not provide a substantive process. And this would be in line with the Planning Commission's resolution that they just passed the other night unanimously, saying that standards should be developed around this process. And so I think it would make sense to have staff and the Planning Commission begin working on that.
Okay, discussion, go ahead, sir.
This is an Assembly motion that should be at the Assembly's discussion.
Oh, it's just Assembly motion, I guess, sir, sorry. Oh, yes, Assembly person, oh, Deputy Mayor.
So to clarify, are you asking that staff be directed to draft an amendment to the proposed ordinance?
Just to develop standards around seventeen oh five, yes.
As an amendment to, because it's being introduced. Seventeen oh five is?
So the repeal of seventeen oh five will be happening, the introduction of repeal of seventeen oh five will be happening, you know, in December or whatever, the way we will be considering it. But I think it would be behoove of us to, to start developing standards as, as recommended by the Planning Commission.
Deputy Mayor, follow up?
So I might address that. So I do believe it would be appropriate to have it be an amendment to the repeal because I think when we notice that it is a repeal, that means that the entire language is, is obviously open. So it might be appropriate to just have the staff work that up as an amendment or substitute ordinance.
And it might be figured to do it on the eighteenth, but it's just the Assembly.
I, I don't think that there's enough time between now and when we're considering the repeal to develop a really thoughtful and deliberative amendment. And I would like staff and the Planning Commission to give us some ideas about how we should amend seventeen oh five to develop those standards.
Are you referring it back then to the Planning Commission?
No, there's nothing to refer, because referral is a legislation, so there's nothing to refer. He's asking just for some standards, doesn't have anything to do with legislation yet. He's just asking for staff to create some standards around seventeen oh five for Assembly consideration. So there's nothing to refer.
So when he said refer back to Planning Commission, that was a misstatement, Ben?
I don't believe I said refer back to the Planning Commission.
I didn't hear him say refer either, Madam Mayor, that's why I looked confused. But I, it doesn't mean it wasn't said.
Yeah, okay. Any other comments by Assembly members?
Madam Mayor, if there's objection, I would do a voice vote.
Okay. Well, we have somebody online, so, yeah, go ahead.
So I mean, just, just as a point of order, I don't believe we direct staff. I believe we could direct the manager, the clerk, or the attorney, but not staff.
Directing the manager, then, yes.
Further discussion on the motion, yes, Assembly person Yount?
Exactly what are we voting on?
Assembly member Hale moved to direct.
The, the motion is to direct the manager in conjunction with the Planning Commission to develop standards around seventeen oh five for Assembly consideration.
Thank you.
So when you say in conjunction with the Planning Commission, to me, that seems like you're referring it back, sir. Go ahead.
If I may, Madam Mayor, just ask for some clarification on a timeframe that you have in mind. I mean, part of the presentation tonight was to kind of communicate some of these things that are already on the list. So if you want it to take precedent over something else, give me a, give me a ballpark to work with. That would be helpful in guiding.
I don't think there's any rush on this. Obviously, we're going to be considering whether or not to repeal it here next month, so, or the, you know, in December. So I don't think there's any rush on this.
Further discussion on the motion? Is there any objection to the motion? Okay, seeing and hearing none, and the motion has been adopted.
Did you check with Assembly member Yount? Because there's a delay, Madam Mayor.
Oh, is Assembly person Bneer, did you have comments or objection?
No objection.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All righty, so, let's see, Assembly person Yount, comments?
Thank you to the staff for the updates in regard to the roads and different things. And then Alex, thanks for putting together a list of all these upcoming things. This makes it so much easier, having a timeline like this and knowing, so we can get ahead of things. This is great, thank you. So, and to the rest of the staff, the updates tonight were awesome. This is something that I'd say half the times we're conversating as Assembly members with our, with our residents is probably in regard to roads. And so being able to give them updates on when things are happening and stuff, it, it helps a lot, thank you.
Assembly person hours, comments?
Just want to say thank you to Commissioner Chesbrough and Glashen for your six years of service on the Planning Commission. Those are some long meetings, sometimes many hours reading packets, so really appreciate it. And just also thank you to staff, just to underline tonight of the huge amount of work that goes on at the borough. Appreciate it.
Deputy Mayor, comments?
I'd also like to thank Commissioner Glashen and Commissioner Chesbrough for your service to the borough. It's greatly appreciated, and yeah, thanks for everybody coming out tonight.
Assembly person Ron, we're online, you have parting comments, sir?
I do. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, and I have some prayer requests. You know, we've got the holiday season's coming up, and there's supposed to be a joyous time for loved ones and family and stuff. But a lot of times holidays are hard on people and stuff. So I want you all to remember those people in your prayers. Pray for our borough, pray for our leadership, give us wisdom. Pray for husbands, love your wives, wives, love your husbands, children, honor your parents. Just fill us with the Holy Spirit, Lord. Please grant us your blessings, turn from evil, follow your ways, Lord. In Jesus' name, I ask and pray, amen.
Okay, and I too want to thank the Planning Commission, those that are departing, and those that are still continuing to serve. It's very much appreciated, thank you. So with that, the meeting will adjourn at eight twenty-three.